While the East Green Bush Central School Leadership Board of Education meets order for May 20 night. Uh, board members present, board members present except for Mr. Mann and Michelle Skomerski will be here. So with that, please rise and join me. Want to welcome a lot of our students here tonight. If you didn't get a signature, you're not at all. This is Emily can sign, probably since she's the closest to the students. It's Kennedy, so I'll go up the hands. I think I got it. Uh, want to welcome everybody back after a long snowing back weekend. So, um, first order of business is our student council, Ron and Cole, and maybe a guest.
Yes, so, um, I would like to acknowledge Natalie Crisanda, who is our newly elected vice president for next year. Um, and Cole, of course, is going to be our president of executive council next year. Um, I'm very happy to have them both here with me. Um, and I'm going to pass it on over to Cole since he is now in charge. Um, this Friday, we will have our annual Colombian awards. We will be presenting awards to juniors and seniors during periods two and three, with some feature performances from the jazz band, chamber singers and others. We are so excited to be congratulating our peers and all their hard work. Next week is our swearing in ceremony where we will swear in all officers from executive council and our class councils. Our plan for next year will be starting on homecoming and we will also be electing different colors for each class. Um, and we also have our senior prom this Friday night. Um, it's going to be at the Albany Capital Center. Uh, my class and our advisors have been working very hard to make this prom as great as it can be. Um, we're very excited for it and we have also been preparing for graduation and have started to put together some really fun things that I hope anyone who attends the ceremony can enjoy. Um, and I personally want to say thank you to all. This is, um, my last board meeting for these two. It will not be, um, but yeah, it's been a fun year. So thank you. That's all we have for tonight.
And they're out of here. All right. Next item is the approval of the draft minutes. We have two to approve. All members were, or all board members were present for those. Um, first one was the public hearing. Any questions, comments, revisions to those minutes? Need a motion to prove those. Jesse, any second? Anyone? Jen, all those in favor? Approved. Then we have the regular meeting draft minutes. All board members were present. Questions, comments, revisions? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that. Joanne, second. Jesse, all those in favor? Well, now move to our board forum. Uh, so to my left with Cheryl.
Um, I just wanted to, A, apologize for being late and B, um, give a, a thank you to the East Green Bush town. They just did a nice little ceremony to honor a bunch of the sports for the winter and the spring. And when there was a huge turnout and they did a great job. So thank you for, for that.
They had a red town hall?
They did, and it was packed. So it was nice.
Just a, uh, shout out on the voter turnout to the administration, the staffs, the unions, everybody in the community for supporting not only our budget, but the capital project as well. I think when we look at the approximately eighty-seven percent passage rate on the budget is an indication that we support the educational community. So I just want to thank everybody, this board and the administration, everyone involved in the budget. And it was, it was a great thing. I was very happy to see that happen.
Yeah, particularly the outreach that the administration did and was to reiterate the work that we did on, you know, people did on weekends and coming out and nights and flyers and volunteered. So that was excellent. So appreciate that. Thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, I'm excited about the, um, capital project starting as well. And just a shout out to the girls' flag football team that I know just had their inaugural season, but they've done so well. So it's super exciting. I'm glad it's happening.
Jesse? It's good. Okay. Joanne, anything? Emily, anything?
No.
Okay. And I don't have any at this point. So we'll move to the public forum. This opportunity for people in the community to address the board. Residents, students, employees and business representatives of the East Green West Central School just may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to sit in concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate to the president or superintendent or contact the individual near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state the record, their name and address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business form is not deemed to be no problem. The board president will conduct the forum for ordinary fish operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which we consider defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited. It will be cleared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. We didn't like to address the board at this time. Oh, I did want to recognize that I see Kathy and Kim are here this evening. Thank you for coming. Newly elected board members for the next term. Anyone? No? Students, anything? Okay. We will now turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Simons, for, uh, reports and presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Beano. I too want to thank the board and the community for coming out and supporting the budget and the capital project. It was really a total team effort on the part of the entire community. I want to thank the board for, uh, supporting the capital project and helping us to develop a project that the community could support. So thank you for the board for their contributions. I want to start reporting on the capital project design and planning that's going on, but I would like to first mention that if you had an opportunity to pull in to Janey, you will see the progress that's been made on the playground, which was part of the two thousand seventeen capital project. That is scheduled to be complete and usable next week, give or take a few days. So it is on schedule. Uh, they have been proceeding. Uh, they poured some of the paving leading into the playground today. So it should be around June fifth that it will be available for students again, give or take a day or two. So that is, uh, good progress moving forward. We have met twice with our construction team since the capital project was approved. Uh, we are starting to plan out the, uh, phasing of the development of the submissions of the project to the state education department. First thing we need to look at is the financial information that the board has seen already regarding the school buildings that have the most available maximum cost allowances. And those, those buildings generally will go first with some modifications to be determined. The second issue that we look at is what, what aspects of the project at those particular buildings that have the higher mass cost, maximum cost allowance are, have, have a quicker timeline to design for our architect so that we can get it in the hopper, so to speak, at SED. So at this point, we're, again, this is tentative. We'll share more complete information with the board and the community on a future meeting. Uh, we will be looking at some work at the high school to replace the roof. That's a short design time in terms of pre-standard replacing the roof and likely the tennis courts. First being submitted as is designed to SED as we also work on golf athletic fields. Kind of part one and the new entrance way, uh, to golf. So those are the kind of things that are kind of sitting first with some understanding that it may change. Jen has been more involved in the details. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add, but in general, it'll be Columbia High School. Some work being done on the roof and the, um, tennis courts and the athletic field starting behind golf with some work on the entrance way.
Yeah, basically, um, we had another meeting today and we're looking at those specific things, uh, Mr. Simons. Also, the consideration of the SED lead time. Right now, it's about twenty-six weeks out. So in terms of that quick design elements, you know, that's what's being looked at initially. So we can make sure we're, you know, um, putting shovel in the ground, you know, at some time next summer. Um, so it's very preliminary. We're in the initial phases and we're, um, of, uh, doing that planning and see what we can do at golf early on too. So.
So the construction team that's meeting during the day, who was that again?
So that is, um, our architect, Basquale.
Basquale, yeah.
Um, Turner, Mike Collins, um, is our project lead, um, and Paul Bickel. Myself and Mr. Simon.
So the group that might be involved where the board can get involved again, like what format committee wise is that going to take place where we can see progress outside of just the, I want to just.
I think we can do an ad hoc committee with the board and say, you know, periodically when we think we have some stuff that is shareable, we, we would, you know, pull an ad hoc committee together like we did.
Even monthly or whatever? Okay. Cause I'd be interested in participating in that.
Okay.
All right. So stay tuned on that. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Item B, we have a new course proposal at Golf Middle School. It is a course that is supportive of our board's goals to ensure that students are aware of the pathways that may be available to them as they proceed from middle school to high school into careers or college or military or trades. I know that Golf Middle School has been doing a lot of work in their family consumer science classes regarding career awareness, but this is an extension of that that will replace an existing course in computer literacy. And I believe Mike Newman is here.
Actually Riley O'Malley.
Okay. I did not see Riley here. Is he in the hallway?
He's in the hallway. Mr. McHugh may be with him as well.
It would be a good trick if he can present from the hallway.
Come this way. You can come around this way.
So while they're making their way in, this proposal for a new course is not only relevant in terms of the skills the students need, it is cost neutral. So we have an existing staff member who is shifting from the computer literacy course to this course, I believe. We gave you an introduction and we said it would be a really nice trick if, and everything else that you're pulling off at the middle school, if you could present from the hallway.
If you don't know me, I'm Riley O'Malley. I'm seventh grade, eighth year over at Golf Middle School. Brought this dynamic to you all with me here.
Needs no introduction?
For sure not.
Jim, I like, I just saw you like ten minutes.
Riley, it's only for the.
Yeah, I'm on it. Gotcha. Um, so we're here tonight to present a new course proposal, uh, for our sixth graders. Currently, our sixth graders at Golf take a course called Computer Literacy. It's one quarter. Every sixth grader takes it. Uh, I'm not sure when it started, maybe about ten or so years ago, maybe a little less, Mike. So obviously a really important course, really important skills that are taught in that course. Um, we're just kind of looking to bolster it a little bit and broaden it a little bit. At our opening day presentation this year, Ray McNulty, future driven education advocate, came to speak and this quote right here that's on the slide really stuck with me and stuck with us. Uh, if you can't see it, it says, "The pace of change today is the slowest it will be for the rest of your life." Basically, you know, you can love or hate technology, but it's not going anywhere and it's, and it's going to rapidly change. So it's really important that we provide our students with the skills to adapt with it, right? We can teach them the new technology in the, in our classrooms, but by the next day, there's a new piece of technology for the students and the staff to learn. So what do you do in response to that? You provide and help them build skills to be adaptable, to be, uh, problem solvers, to be critical thinkers so that no matter what the technology is, they're able to kind of move along with it. And you'll see kind of part of our future driven education here is, you know, really moving our students forward, trying to teach them those, uh, problem solving skills. Communication is a big piece. If you talk with our staff and I'm sure throughout the high school and even elementary buildings, coming back from COVID, sure, we're starting to get a little bit back to normalcy, but that communication piece is certainly still quite a bit of a gap. So we're looking to close that. And we also want to have like a whole learner approach. So not just focused on learning technology, not just that digital literacy, but also being able to interact beyond that as well. So again, some of the big key points of, of why we want to change from computer literacy to a course called Introduction to Career Readiness. One, we want to broaden our focus. Again, digital literacy and those skills are extremely important. However, we want to be able to teach them wider skills, as I talked about before, um, so that they can take with them no matter what career path or college readiness that they, they go into. Uh, what we might call soft skills, but we all know are really difficult to acquire and to learn. Again, the ability to communicate, the ability to problem solve, critically think, deal with conflict in a productive manner and work through it. And then of course, student and workforce, uh, exposure and, and exposing parents to different, uh, career paths as well. Um, you know, obviously we kind of know what we know. We know what we've been exposed to. We know what our parents did. And, and certainly some of the more, uh, career paths that are at the forefront, but there's a lot of cool things that are coming about these days. And it's really a, a great opportunity to get our sixth graders to learn that stuff early on. Mike, Jim, anything you want to add?
Two, two additional comments. One is that the district's technology plan, we're seeing the fruits of that labor now. So we had that digital literacy, the computer literacy, K five's doing an outstanding job. These kids are coming to us with that skill set now. So we didn't see it initially. So we were teaching it at the middle school. The kids are immersed in it now. We're seeing it and they have those computer digital literacy, uh, skills. The other thing that we have been trying to do, uh, just trying to test the waters a little bit. We have a first one coming up, I think on June tenth is our, uh, our, we, we have these lunch and learn programs. So we're bringing people out from the workforce. They're coming into the school and they're actually during our student CCS time and our lunch, they're talking and, and, uh, having lunch with our students. So that all started, uh, from our teachers. So our teachers, Debrina Leva, started that initiative. She's got our kids out going on field trips, different work, uh, workplaces, and she's got people coming into the buildings for these lunch and learn programs. So we just want to kick it up another notch. We don't really see the need for the digital literacy that we saw, uh, five, six years ago. And we do see the career awareness and career readiness. That's where it starts with Naviance, getting these kids to understand what those jobs are out there right now and how quickly and rapidly things are changing. But really focusing on that teamwork kind of approach, getting kids to work, problem solve and getting kids ready.
Yeah. And our last slide here, just to kind of put, put a bow on things, just this, this illustrates, um, the fact that we're carrying over a lot of the things that we had in computer literacy. We're not scrapping, uh, a lot of the things that are being taught in that. Instead, we're kind of embedding them into this introduction to career readiness course. And again, as Mr. McHugh talked about, building some character education around it, getting that college readiness earlier, exposing the students to things like Naviance and Cluster Finder, and then getting them, um, kind of introduced to some career readiness pieces as well. As we look to start to build the curriculum, you know, obviously we'll talk with Debrin, John Serencioni and, and a lot of our other CTE instructors about what they want to see their students kind of come in the building or come into their classrooms with. And we can start to kind of build backwards from there. Any questions?
Just a comment for me. I think this fits in well to what we're looking to do, which is really get a, a student ready, um, when they, when they graduate. And, and what do we want to see them have? You, we do want to see them have a perspective of what they think for them, especially with the change in technology that we have. Life is going to be very different for these guys in ten years, if not five years. So starting them young, early to say, all right, let me see what I might want to do is, is perfect. And, and the college readiness is great because it takes a long time for them to get on Naviance and try to figure it out. And I think it's overwhelming to some of the high school kids. So I think the earlier we get them there, the more adaptable be when they start to get to the high school and really need to use it.
I don't think, I think the perspective, um, that, that, that you brought was, uh, invaluable. Um, you know, when I was looking at the slides, I really didn't gather the, the, the prior work of building computer literacy that occurred. Uh, the need to evolve that, um, and think broader, um, to help further develop, um, the skills of, of, of the children. Um, and I really think the administrators and teachers, that's where change should be coming from. I think also, um, I, I, I was wondering also just thinking about, you know, as technology is changing. I noticed the shift in coding. I was just wondering if, if there's other pathways, you know, like for what may have been left out or, or just the reasoning for why, you know, what, what has been retained versus what's not retained? Just, just, just for understanding, ju- just the shift, you know, I definitely agree with the change. I'm, I'm glad for the explanation. And I'm just wondering direction, you know, what are we thinking about the skills left behind versus what, what, what we're acquiring now?
I think one of the, one of the big things that's here is AI, chat G P. I mean, even we have to start understanding that that's not going away. We need to teach our students how to utilize those things. I mean, I utilize those things. So we have to figure out ways to really embed that in the curriculum and, and really, that's going to be a, a topic that's really going to be, need to be discussed a lot deeper and further, but those things are coming. Uh, just read the NISBA, uh, newspaper that was released, uh, this week and it talked about still seventy percent of the jobs in the future, five years out are going to require a college degree or a credential or a certificate. So we know AI is coming. We know that's going to impact the job market. Um, and we really need to expose kids to that. So the biggest thing is families and kids don't know what they don't know when it comes to workforce development. Jobs have disappeared. They've gone away. No other jobs have, uh, you know, come about. So uh, really trying to stay on top of that and get our kids to understand that, our families to understand that. But I think AI is, you know, going to change things remarkably for schools. We still have that same issue of, of, you know, kids producing things through chat G P. So teaching our kids how to utilize it and, and where it can be used.
Yeah, just a comment too. I think I, I really like the shift to the professional skills, critical thinking, exposure. I think this really helps some of the parents too, where they can see that not just the college readiness, but the career readiness and the fields that opportunities will be open to kids in the future and families in the future. Also, as the Blue Ribbon Commission looks at different pathways for graduation, we want to make sure we expose kids to different pathways. So when they do come out, they can see those opportunities to graduate and go into career colleges, uh, as families. And I think the, like Michelle said, exposure to Naviance, I would, you know, to me it was foreign. It's still foreign and I, I really never got into it. So I really appreciate getting into a younger, uh, demographic for that, for families too, to expose that. So good, it's a good shift.
Like just a comment, I, I appreciate you bringing this to the, the younger kids. I think as the district moves forward, we all can agree that technology is here to stay. The job market is ever shifting. And I think one thing we've learned is that earlier we exposed the students and the other critical component is the families. And I think one of the directional shifts we might think about as a, a long-term objective of the district is how do we bring families up to speed as well? Because we can expose the children all we want, but there is a deficit in the connection, the family connection for some, some groups. So I think this is a good first step, but I would, I would challenge you, Ryan, to not only expand it, but, uh, give some exposure to, to bring the families in and, and exposing them as to, so they understand what they're, because like Mike said, that my, uh, technology I learned on my own, but it has its limits and I'm sure that a lot of people feel that way. So thank you for what.
Yeah. The other piece too is really the assessment of a new course like this, you know, what's, what's the experience after a year, two years, how are we going to tweak it? You know, modify, work with other teachers to make sure that it's still fitting with the needs and blending it nicely from that continuum from elementary to middle school and then to high school.
Well, I think to, to, to piggyback on that and for projection purposes, we're at a really beginning piece of taking technology and really being able to analyze who you're developing the, the footprint of a graduate. And we can now take those predictors for success earlier and earlier and get interventions in place on what, you know, it's one thing to, to expose people, but to actually take the data that we're learning. There's so much data that we really don't have a full grasp a lot of what is it telling us? And that isn't the only solution. I don't want anybody to think that, but that is a good indicator on where to deploy resources, sources as well.
Yeah. The other thing we're thinking about is student motivation, right? I mean, our teacher shared all the time, why do I need to learn this? Um, you know, to get kids interested in something, to find something that every student might be interested in, that could be the difference of getting them to put like a little elbow grease in there and a little bit more effort. But, you know, they'd see something at the end, like that's what I want to be. That's what I want to do. This is what I need to do now to set myself up for that. So we're hoping that there's that motivational element too. The kids get hooked and they get interested in something like he's doing that or she's doing that. I can do that too. And maybe the buy-in academic group be there behind that.
Well, think about what we do in our daily lives. You're watching a television program at night and you see something and you go, I don't really understand what, what does that mean? And you're on your, everyone's looking at their devices going, oh, I didn't realize in the twelfth century that went on. I mean, I'm watching a lot of history stuff. We got George Washington. How do we make George Washington interesting again? Through technology. So there's a lot of different things that you can really get crazy with because we're all doing it. We don't even realize it every day. So I, I, again, take the ball and run.
And I have to, oh, sorry, Jim. I have to stress, I was really nervous last week and Jeff knows this, is when we started doing the pathway of a portrait of a, a graduate, so many jobs in the future may be going away because it's going to be technology. So I am worried what these kids are going to have as a career. So get them in young, early to, to see. I mean, a lot of the service jobs, you know, based on what we saw are already being done by computers, you know, robots or whatever. How, how can we drive these students to make sure that they're going to have a career readiness as they graduate? Start young, sixth grade is, is very important.
Sorry, Jim. I just want to commend your reactivity, taking a computer literacy course that was working well. Really analyzing it, seeing what we still need, what we don't, and expanding on it, making something bigger, better to help the kids.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that as well. Um, you know, being proactive, um, is really great. And I think that, that this is what that the district needs. Um, when we think about, you know, uh, achieving our goals. Um, one of the things I, I just want to, and perhaps, you know, I'm, I'm on a lone island here, is that I don't necessarily think that, you know, you need to know at, at a young age, what you want to do with your life. I think that sometimes that's a little ambitious. Right? How do, how do I develop the skills to analyze, uh, you know, I like doing this or this brings me joy. So maybe what is, you know, around that? I think that, you know, if you look at it, maybe as like the, the millennial, I don't know, at the table, geriatric millennial, I'll just say, um, I, I don't think that, um, you know, it's, it, your career is a linear. Uh, I, I don't think we're seeing a lot of that. People are moving around more than ever and shifting. And, um, I think if we can incorporate, you know, that sort of thing, and that's why I'm extremely interested in the soft skills because those are transferable skills that take you no matter where you go. And you need those skills to even be able to assess, like, you know, am I, am I going to be good at this job? Do I like this job? Does it bring me joy? Um, and I think like when I'm thinking about, you know, that sort of age, that's what I would want, you know, my child or like, you know, the, you know, children of the future to be able to have that sort of ability to look intrinsically and to kind of develop those skills. Not necessarily like, I like doing X, Y, Z, so I'm going to do that for the rest of my life. Um, and I think that, you know, if we can capture that in this and really foster that, that's how I feel like you foster a person who's ready, not only for career, but for anything, school, life. So I'm, I'm happy to see that and I can't wait to see what the actual curriculum looks like. So thank you.
I agree, Emily, because I think, what is it? The average career change now is like seven times. Yeah. So that's a really good point. Um, I am fully supportive. I think it's a great idea. The only thing I hope is included is, as Mike was saying, careers, um, different pathways. So some of these speakers that are coming in don't have to be four-year or master's degrees. They could be someone in the trades especially, or different pathways in terms of entrepreneurial skills. Um, there's so many changes even at the community college level now with certificates and these, you know, short ways. And I, I mean, I think part of it is keeping some of these schools afloat, but it's also manageable ways people can get skills and get employed if that's what they want.
I wanted to echo the thoughts too, um, one of my thoughts, like I, I do think principally we're, we're building people and that that was one of the things that, that I was thinking as well, just, you know, being happy, healthy, right? Finding how to fulfill yourself, whether it's through career or through life, you know, but what kind of person do you want to be and how to monetize it, you know? And I think, when I think of a career, I think monetizing yourself as a person so you could put yourself into, whether it's work, whether it's school, community, but how to always just be present, you know?
I think this is a really good conversation and it's, it's the beginning. And I'm going to take it back to what you said in the very beginning, Jim. Making, learning, using technology, finding what kids are interested, because it ties into what Emily said. And this is not a new thing. I remember back in. And this is not a new thing. I remember back in pre millennials. I'm going to date myself. I'm taking it back to the wheel gun and the pen. When we went to school, I remember my father sitting me down and saying, son, you can be an educated ditch digger. Making learning fun, I think, is the challenge for the future. Back in, you know, when when some of us were younger, you 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 just learn because, but it wasn't fun. But now you have the you have the ability to make it fun and knowledge for the sake of knowledge. Because it goes to, it really does tie to what Emily said. Think of all of us in our careers, how many times we changed our own mind and we didn't have all these interferences that children are faced with today and families are faced with today. So I think this is the very beginning and it goes back to, we have to, as a community, figure out how to or continue to strive to make kids want to come to school and learn for the sake of learning. We don't need a lot of technology, but create that environment that gives them the ability to make the adjustment as they go through life, because they're going to have, the average person today, if you study the demographic, changes their careers at a much more advanced rate than when I was in that position. You found a hole, you honed into it and you stayed there. Companies don't do that. Society doesn't do that. People don't live in the same place like they used to. So all these challenges play into this. And I think if it goes back to technology, what does technology do? Kids are excited about technology right now because it's a way of their life. They see it, they use it and 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 teach them how to be proper, good learners through technology. So thanks again. Thanks for a great conversation. I'm going to miss this like around. So we'd like to bring a formal resolution to approve the course either at the next meeting or if the board is comfortable this evening and you want to just do it verbally, you can do that as well.
Yeah, we can entertain a motion to approve the course now. Motion that Jesse second joint. Those in favor, approve. Congratulations. Go forth.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for presenting very well.
Hey, Mike, we want this program for kind of partners by next year.
So while some of our students dispersed because they put their time in, we we will transition to Mr. Simons with a scorecard. Yes, and I see. Can wait a second, yeah. Everybody got their forms signed? You're good? Whenever you're ready, Mr. Simons.
So annually, in the fall, our Board of Education sets goals for the school year. In some cases, those goals are broader and follow over multiple years. The goals identify the priorities of the different areas that the board would like to see the administration, faculty and the staff working on throughout the year. This year, through our board retreat and then a follow up couple of public board meetings, our board aligned its goals with three focus areas, which are similar to the areas that the federal initiative, A A S A Learning 2025 is supporting through professional development for school administrators. First area is future driven education, which is timely, as we just talked about that for consideration regarding the middle school course. The second area is whole learner focus. And the third area is safe, inclusive and diverse schools. When the, once the goals are established, the administration identifies some objectives, strategies, timelines, data points to share with the board, which we did in the fall. And then we work on these areas with all of our administrative team, faculty, staff, in many cases, the community, and provide a progress report. So what we're about to present, our central office team, is a progress report that provides more visibility to the activities that are going on within the district, to the board and to the community. This is a document that is really a summary of the things that we are doing. It's not a complete exhaustive list, be much thicker than 10 pages. But it does give you a good idea of the things that we're working on to continue to move the district forward and align with the board's goals. So the first focus area, future driven education, is on page one. And the general statement of what the board aspires is to provide innovative curriculum, differentiated instructional programs and modern school facilities to ensure students are prepared with the skills they need for future success. And under that, we have goal number one, which I'm going to ask Mr. Stiles to speak to.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So as Mr. Simons has mentioned, I'm going to speak a little bit about goal number one. Under that goal, we do have two objectives. So the first objective was to really engage our education committee and develop a portrait of a graduate for our East Green Bush School District. So I'm going to go into a little bit of a portrait of a graduate. We've talked a little bit about this, but I just wanted to give a little bit more in depth talk of what a portrait is. And we do actually have two of our board members that were willing to participate in our design team. So a portrait of a graduate is really a shared vision that articulates what our community aspires for our students. Talks about what are the skills and mindsets that our students need to be successful. And that goes beyond the typical content knowledge that we talked about, a lot of the the things that you heard Mr. O'Malley, you know, discuss. Even though the general term is portrait of a graduate, it is not just a high school initiative. It's really a K or pre K through 12 initiative. We've had a design team. The design team is made up of about 40 or so members. We have students, administrators, teachers and other staff, community members, family members, and as I said, a few Board of Education members as well. That design team has met two times already. So we met a few weeks ago in May. We talked and spent a lot of time at the first meeting really dissecting why do we need a portrait of a graduate? Why is that work important? And then we spent a lot of time discussing what the different skills and competencies that we want our students to have. We do have a third meeting coming up next week, June 5th. At that meeting, we will have our four to seven competencies selected and identified. And we'll start discussing how do we make that portrait of a graduate a reality for all of our students? And then there will be a fourth meeting in late June where we'll reveal what the portrait of a graduate is and really discuss what does that mean for our district moving forward? So, you know, the portrait is just, you know, at the end, there's going to be somewhere between four to seven skills slash competencies that we want to make sure that all of our students are getting pre K up through grade 12. And like I said, it's beyond just content knowledge. So that's just an overview of what a, you know, the portrait of a graduate is. So we partnered this year with an organization called Patel for Kids that helped facilitate the creation of our portrait. I think anybody who's on that on the committee, they've done a really great job of of leading those meetings. Under our measurable indicators, our goal was to have a portrait of a graduate done by the end of this school year, which we're very confident that that will be done. And then really discuss, you know, what is a plan for rolling out with that portrait is going to mean for our district, you know, the following year and beyond. Our second objective under goal one was exploring resources and strategies to differentiate and rich and personalized learning for students at all levels. Again, the the strategy that we're really using for that is just continuous review of our curriculum, our instructional practices, our resources that we use and our programming. And again, under the progress notes, you can see there that, you know, many of the resources that we currently have really allow us to differentiate and personalize learning for for our students. As Mr. Simons has mentioned, this is not, you know, in all of, you know, just a complete list of of resources, but just some of the resources that we're using, our Renaissance products, you've heard me probably speak about, you know, the Renaissance STAR exams, assessments that we that we give three times a year. There are some products that we use that are aligned to those, which really allow the teachers to really hone in and target the different skills, you know, that students need. And then some other things that we have purchased over the last few years. You know, this list here really, you know, they help us continue to make sure we're providing targeted instruction, you know, for students at all different levels, providing, you know, tier one, tier two and tier three instruction.
I'm still on the first page, board goal number two, which again is still aligned with the focus area, future driven education. A few years ago, the district administration and the board was concerned that we weren't prioritizing the support and the direction that was needed at the middle level at Gulf Middle School. And while we have always had a very successful middle school, it was a real recognition that it's a really critical time for kids to progress from the elementary school to the high school. And we ought to be putting more resources into it in terms of staffing, but also in terms of direction. And so once Mr. McHugh was hired as the interim principal, we began to create a process whereby there were some visitations that the school staff made to other middle schools came back, had conversations about scheduling at the middle school, intervention programs at the middle school, policies that could occur at the middle school to have to address the needs of the students. From there, there were a number of things that we did to provide more support, including professional development and changes that are more in line with the characteristics of middle school kids. So one of the goals of the board is to continue this middle school initiative and being whole learner centered, stakeholder driven and encompassing evidence based best practices at the middle level. So this year, we determined to continue our effective practices to ensure that we could effectively transition our students from the middle school to the high school and our elementary students from the elementary schools to the middle school. With the board's support during the budget process, we last year were able to provide sufficient teaching staff to implement teaming in grade six. We had sufficient staff this year to implement full teaming in grade seven. Teaming, for those that may be listening, is the assignment of the core area teachers to the same 100 students in general and including some structuring of art, music and special area programs so that the students are working in a smaller learning community of about 100 students and are able to work with the same teachers and the teachers develop common knowledge about the kids, not only their academic needs, but their social emotional needs, and it creates a smaller learning network of support for the children. So currently, we have full teaming in grade six and grade seven, providing a more school within the school atmosphere. Teaming also enables the teachers to have common preparation time, social studies, English, math and science, and occasionally bringing in the special ed teachers and the special area teachers to talk about the needs of the students. So teaming is working well and is a best practice for middle school. And we have now have sixth grade and seventh grade in full teaming. There also have been some adjustments to the number of lunch periods at the middle school level this year, which have made has made the atmosphere in the cafeteria more student centered, reducing the number of instances where kids may may have difficulties interacting with each other because it's noisy or because it's a little bit more lack of a better word, chaotic than we might like it to be. So we added additional lunch periods, which reduced the number of kids in the cafeteria. And there's a better feeling in the cafeteria in terms of kids being able to enjoy their lunch, interact socially with one another and fewer discipline problems. Additionally, we also moved the assignment of classrooms of teachers so that the transition times for the students were reduced. So the length that they had to walk in the hallway, which tend to be tends to be an unstructured time that finds itself to more negative interactions, has been reduced significantly. That has created a better atmosphere within the hallways of the school, as well as the visibility of the teachers and the staff. We talk a lot about making sure that assessments and learning is relevant. We found in looking at a common practice we had in place for a long time, that the midterm exams were just being given, but very little utilization of the results of the midterm exams, and Mr. McHugh has reported on this in the past. So the midterm exams were eliminated, which provided more pupil teacher contact time for instruction. And there has been work done on the final assessments that are done so that they're in common, they're in common. Regardless of who the teacher is, the science teacher is teaching seventh grade science, students are administered the same exam. And I'm proud to say that in the case of science and math, our middle schools have developed, middle school teachers have developed performance based assessments, which are more authentic ways for students to demonstrate their learning. We've also had significant professional development and mental health awareness. We have an organization called Same Here Global that we learned about at the New York State School Boards Conference of two years ago, has been working with the entire faculty and staff on normalizing and letting people know, students and faculty alike, that everybody has mental health and everyone has good days and bad days. And how do we normalize it and make it a conversation that we have about everyone's needs in the middle school? I reported last year that we were having some student to student interaction issues in terms of behaviors. And proactively, Mr. McHugh and the administrators and the staff have brought in an organization called Mediation Matters that has been working on ways to address behaviors, but through appropriate restorative practices, as well as conflict resolution. A conflict is an opportunity and a natural state of relationships. And how do we harness the energy from conflict to help students interact better with each other and help faculty and staff address inappropriate behaviors in less of a punitive manner and more of a productive manner? The morning TV show has been restored and we are doing that on a daily basis with Google Meet, recognizing that it is important to celebrate each day as a new day at the middle school with student recognitions, announcement of events, as well as positive things that the students and the faculty are doing every day. And there is a student centered focusness that has been supported in the middle school, building positive relationships with students, helping students make connections with each other and to their learning and having a mindset, again, that every day is a new day. So I want to applaud the work of the middle school, of middle school for all of this. And again, I want to thank our board and our administrative team for supporting the prioritization of the middle level education and East Green Bush Central. Turning to page two, we're focusing on goal three, and I'm going to turn that over to Jennifer Mulligan.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So board goal number three was to develop and implement facility improvements, which provide future driven teaching, learning and extracurricular environments for students, educators and communities. And we have two objectives under this board goal. The first was to develop and obtain community approval of a capital project, which we were successful of by spring of 2024. There were three primary strategies in developing this particular project. First was to work with our fiscal advisor to understand what budgetary impacts and what impact the project could have on our tax levy and to ultimately determine the size of the project. Also, working with the Board of Education and stakeholder groups to plan the scope of the project and then also seeking input from our stakeholder groups. So primarily, that was Mr. Simons, myself, Mr. Bickel and Mr. Adam that worked on the communications. We had lots of meetings with various community groups. We had a lot of communication materials. So basically, through that process in March, you know, the board had approved the final project scope. And then there was also the podcast, Let's Learn Together was used to help promote some of that capital project, poster boards, brochures, various videos were marketing the project, which led to a successful project vote in May with an 85% super majority on that project. So moving into the. So moving into the second objective is basically beginning the process of submitting our first phase of our project to SED. And Mr. Simons had just reported under the update, you know, we've started that process already. So we've had two meetings. Those meetings will continue on a weekly basis to look at what the design schedule is, what the phasing will be, with the goal to get this first phase submitted in the fall. There is a 26 week lead time on the project with SED for approval. So it's critical that we get things moving quickly in order to have some construction begin in the summer of 2025. So that is board goal number three.
Going back to Mr. Stiles to talk about goal number four.
Sure, thank you. So, goal number four, which is the first one that's under our being whole learner focused, is to continue to implement curriculum programming and instructional practices that will lead to an increase in our graduation rate for all students, increase the percentage of graduates with an advanced rated diploma by passing eight or more Regents exams. So our objective under that, this goal this year was to inform caregivers and students regarding the multiple pathways, options and available credentials to graduate from high school, including advanced rated diploma, the seal of civic readiness, seal of bioliteracy and other credentials. So a strategy that we use this year was to really try to increase student awareness for the seal of civic readiness and seal of bioliteracy. A lot of work went into this at the high school with Mr. Harkin, the assistant principals, counseling department, our social studies departments and in our world language department as well. So really excited that this year we are having, looks like we're going to have approximately six students that will be graduating with the seal of bioliteracy this June. And approximately 34 students will have the seal of civic readiness on their diplomas in June. And then in terms of our, you know, our Regent's Diploma rate and Advanced Regions, you know, that that information will come, you know, in June after those Regents exams. So I'm really excited with the work, you know, with the seal of civic readiness. This was the first year that we're offering that seal and to have 34 students just goes to show, you know, all the hard work. You know, by our students clearly, but really our staff getting that information out there and giving the students this opportunity. And I, and I think, you know, we will see the same thing with the seal of bioliteracy continue to grow as well.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. On page three is goal number five, which is to promote and support the expansion of pathways for students to pursue the trades, careers and technical fields. And I'll just generalize this, there are three objectives, which included some conversations that we had with the board at the board retreat regarding making sure that we were working with our counseling department to ensure that students and families were aware of opportunities that would present themselves both academically within the school, but also when they graduate. So we looked at our current practices in the counseling department. The counseling center at the high school did some reassessment and evaluation of how they would respond to students that are in crisis, being seen immediately. There is a child study team process that looks at the needs of students for referral or counseling. Counselors have also restored in-person meetings with students regarding any aspects of the school. A mentoring program for students has been implemented. They are expanding the number of group services, group counseling services and sessions that are offered. And we were able to employ a department chair, which was appointed that is working with the counselors at all levels, elementary, middle school and high school on the needs of our students and our caregivers. So there are some, some work that has been done to structure the counseling department around these priorities. Secondly, making sure that there's information available to students and caregivers. In-person meetings have been held with the junior class students and their families. College night has shifted to be a career and college night, and also expanded the number of opportunities for students to learn about workforce opportunities that don't involve going to college, as well as important financial aid information. More information regarding scholarships that are available for students are being publicized through emails sent to students, as well as their families, particularly our seniors. And more awareness is being raised regarding existing job fairs and what now is being called college caravans, where the colleges show up on campus and kids and families have an opportunity to interact with admissions office staff and other program staff. The third one, exploring pre-apprenticeship programs to include partnerships with BOCs and trade unions. Just to repeat something that I have said at budget meetings, we have the largest number of students of any district participating in career and technical education programs at Questar Three BOCs, as well as at the STEM High School, at the Hudson Valley Community College and Tech Valley High School. So we hosted a number of opportunities for our students to learn about post-high school employment and access to training programs through a non-traditional career fair. I did attend that fair this year. It was very well received. Everyone from the plumbing unit, unions to the carpenter union, to the electrical unions, to law enforcement, to agencies that support students to transition from high school into a career. Students that may have disabilities were represented, our local community colleges, as well as many local employers in fields that you may not think about, but are accessible to students right here in this area. Our transition coordinator at the high school, Lori Donegan, coordinated that event. We've also taken kids to Career Jam at Hudson Valley Community College. I think we are the only school that takes all of its eighth graders to Hudson Valley Community College and in prior years to Sienna for Career Jam. We brought our kids through an open house at Amazon warehouse. We also have had, we are including within our Columbia Awards Day, a recognition that was suggested by the board to ensure that our graduating seniors who are entering right into the workforce or serving in the military are also recognized. And that will be added to our Columbia Day program. I thank Mr. Samersky for that suggestion. So we're doing a lot in that area to promote awareness regarding the pathways to the trades, careers and technical fields. And we do need to continue to do more. Goal six?
Goal six, thank you, Mr. Simons. So goal six is to increase the percentage of students in grade three through eight scoring at level three and level four on the New York State ELA mathematics and science assessments. So really the objective on this is, is around student data, making sure reviewing our student data and continuing to develop goals and plans for improvement for all of our student groups. You know, the strategy is really to make sure that we're providing supports for our students at all three tiers of instruction. And, you know, thinking about the different things that we're doing on this. You know, I think a goal like this is probably never going to say complete. It's always going to be something that's in progress and constantly being reviewed. You know, but all of our elementary schools and golf middle school examine student data, you know, through data team meetings on a regular basis. We're always reviewing our, our star early literacy, reading and math results, and making sure that we're incorporating that data analysis into those data team meetings and grade level meetings. Our district literacy committee is doing a lot of work to continue to ensure that our ELA program and our resources that we have are meeting the needs for all of our students. And when we're seeing that there may be gaps there is really seeing how can we address those needs to make sure that we're providing, you know, everything that we can for all of our students. Again, providing ongoing professional development to support increased utilization for targeted resources that we have. We're really utilizing the Questar content specialists for embedded professional development in the areas of ELA, math and science. And then also, you know, our district's ELA MTSS coordinator, Ms. Mahar, really works closely with all of the building principals to make sure that she's supporting those buildings and make sure, you know, every building is unique and every building has different needs. So she's making sure she's constantly communicating with the principals and seeing what those principals need and their teachers need to be successful to make sure we're supporting all of our students.
Mr. Stiles, we've had a lot of conversations about Universal PK, so at public board meetings. So not that it's not important, it's very important to us, but we're going to skip over it in the interest of time. And we're going to go to our goal number eight. This is also Mr. Stiles.
Thank you.
You're back on.
So goal number eight is develop and implement a multi-tiered system of behavioral support for students, ensuring that struggling students and families remain connected to and feel supported by the educational community. So something that we're, you know, focusing on, we have two objectives. One is, you know, utilizing EdVista, you know, to track our, you know, our student data. So that's something that we're continuously looking at and evaluating, really targeted more at golf middle school and Columbia High School in terms of the, you know, really tracking that data. You know, when, in terms of, you know, supporting students, you know, we have the data that we have to pay attention to as things are coming up. But, you know, the second objective is really, I, I think, just being more proactive in making sure that we're providing professional development for our faculty on mental health, social emotional learning and trauma informed practices. So the strategy there, you know, you really have continued the work with the district SEL committee. That committee is led by Dr. Pennick. We also provide multiple professional development opportunities for staff in the areas of mental health, SEL and trauma informed practices. You know, so this year, Mr. Simon, Simons has mentioned that we partnered with Same Here Global at the middle school. We also have partnered with them at the high school and provided professional development for all middle school and high school staff, you know, with Same Here Global, which I think has gotten a really, you know, positive feedback. We've also partnered with an organization called Pranamani to support our elementary schools. Woman's name is actually Rebecca McGinn. I think, you know, this is our first year that we have worked with her. And again, the feedback from the elementary schools has been very, very positive. You know, she's done some different professional development sessions, but she's also really gotten into the schools and done some embedded, you know, targeted work at the elementary schools. You know, and she always has that, you know, trauma informed practices, you know, in mind with all of the work that she, that she does. We're continuing to work with Questar with some SEL support. And then also, this year, we're piloting at the elementary level zones of regulation, which is a, you know, an SEL curriculum. We have participants from all of our elementary schools participating in that pilot.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. We're going to skip over page five. We have had conversations about our school safety policies and practices at public meetings, including our SRO program. We continue to work with law enforcement to strengthen our SRO program and we thank the community for the high level of support that the police officers provide our schools. Going to goal number 10 on page six, this was an important priority for our district and our board. Goal number 10 is to ensure a culture of inclusion for all students and families. The district will address policies, practices and school activities to provide an inclusive environment. Our first objective was to continuously monitor our policies and our practices to ensure inclusivity, equity and valuing diversity. We have engaged the New York State School Boards Association in a service where they provide us with audit of our policies, policies that need to be updated to comply with the commissioner's regulations or recommended policies for areas that we might want to consider. Additionally, we've been working with the Questar Three Professional Development to talk about possibly a book study for our board and administrators, as well as we recently announced that our unified sports program was named a national banner school for its inclusive practices. Columbia High School was named as a result of the Unified Sports Program. Some things that may not have been talked about in public, but we did a few years ago, did a U.S. Department of Education climate survey. This was several years ago. We would like to do that again next year to see if we can do some comparison between the data we receive from students at the fifth grade level, all the way through the 12th grade level and parents and employees. This year alone, the board approved changes to the following policies related to this area. The code of conduct, which is the disciplinary code of the district, was updated by our attorneys and approved by our board with current definitions of harassment, bullying and discrimination. We want everyone to feel they belong in our schools and be treated and welcomed with respect. As part of that, we addressed the dress code and modified the language of the dress code based on the advice of council to ensure that the language was gender neutral. We also added language to the dress, excuse me, to the code of conduct to comply with the Crown Act, which addresses the need that students should not be disciplined for wearing certain protective hairstyles and students should not be disciplined for dressing in a certain manner that expresses their gender identity or culture in accordance with the dignity for all students act. That's one of the first things we did in August and September and got that in place for the school year. Additionally, based on commissioner's regulation changes, we addressed the need to update our use of timeout room policy for student responding to students with behavioral issues, as well as physical restraint. Timeout rooms should be limited in their utilization, as well as physical restraint. And there are requirements to communicate to parents when students are placed in those circumstances, as well as other reporting mechanisms. Workplace violence under the coordination of Marissa Cannon, we came into compliance rather quickly with a new requirement that our board passed a new policy to ensure an inclusive and safe environment for all of our employees. We updated our homebound instruction policy to make sure that our number of hours that we are providing for tutoring for students that are suspended or missing school due to medical reasons is in accordance with state requirements, the number of hours was increased. Golf Middle School I mentioned is currently working on mediation matters to provide opportunities for kids to learn how to resolve problems more supportively and for staff to be able to work with students in a restorative manner. We've had three engagements so far with the faculty and the students with mediation manners, and we plan to maintain that for next year. You can see the mission of mediation manners, which is to access, help people access the skills they need to guide and guide people and institutions and communities through conflict to foster systemic change towards a more just and equitable society. And we've listed all of the different characteristics of what and qualities that mediation matters is supporting. On the next page, I won't get into this, but there is a long list of activities that have occurred in each school to welcome families and to recruit new families into our school environment and our committees, as well as a long list on pages eight and partially on page nine of all of the volunteer and community service activities that our children do. I don't know when they have time to sleep. They're doing so much at every level and I appreciate the principals providing me with all of this information. So there's a few pages that are dedicated to family engagement and students engaging in community service. And now I'm going to shift to board goal 11. I'm going to ask Marissa Cannon, our Director of Human Resources, to talk about goal 11.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Board goal 11 is to continue to explore new initiatives to recruit, develop, promote and support a diverse and inclusive talent pipeline of leaders, educators and support staff. We have two objectives. Our first is to extend our recruitment efforts beyond the capital region and partner with our regional institutions. Our strategies were to differentiate our recruitment efforts and foster positive student teacher partnerships with our local colleges. This year, we attended several recruiting events. Most recently, on April 17th, we attended the Albany Job Fair to recruit for our non-instructional positions. On April 16th, the district attended the Western New York Teacher Recruitment Day held at the Niagara Falls Convention Center. This event featured qualified candidates for teacher and related service provider employment opportunities from 11 colleges. The complete list is on the progress notes, but to name a few, there was Buffalo State, Canisius University, Fredonia, Niagara, St. Bonaventure, SUNY Janusio. On March 27th, the district attended the Career Fair at St. Rose. This career fair was specific to employees of the college looking for opportunities within the greater capital region after the close of St. Rose. On March 18th, we attended the Professions in Education Career Fair and Employer Showcase. This event allowed for one-on-one meet and greets with instructional and non-instructional candidates. And the event also offered a drive a bus opportunity where candidates interested in becoming school bus drivers could get behind the wheel and see if they wanted to move forward in that direction. In addition, we partnered with Clarkson Education Department this year and attended Clarkson Mock Interview Day on February 29th. And on November 1st, 2023, the district attended the SUNY Schenectady County Community College Career Fair. to recruit for teaching assistants, food service helpers, automotive mechanics and substitutes. Next year, we are looking to further expand our efforts to other areas and regions of the New York State and possibly expanding our efforts beyond the state of New York. This year, we welcomed 52 student teachers and interns into our school district through our positive working relationships with SUNY Albany, St. Rose, SUNY Oneonta, Adolpha University, Santa College, SUNY Potsdam, Syracuse University, Maria College and Russell Sage College. Our second objective was to implement and utilize additional recruiting tools and resources. Our strategy was to provide modifications to employment agreements that would improve recruitment and hiring for the future. And then begin to transition to Recruit Front, which is an applicant tracking system that integrates with Schoolfront, which is a school management platform. The district worked with the E G T A through our negotiations process to provide increased discretion to allow for additional experience credit for the purpose of establishing the initial salary offers when hiring new teachers and related service providers. In addition, we worked with the E G T A to make modifications to the hiring committee structure. And the implementation of Recruit Front commenced in September 2023. Our H R department meets with the implementation team on a weekly basis to make sure we're fully utilizing all of the recruitment strategies within the platform. All of our positions are now posted on Recruit Front and then one of the nice features about Recruit Front, it also automatically posts to Indeed. And in December 2023, the H R team began implementation of Schoolfront's electronic onboarding feature to just create efficiencies and streamline the process between the Human Resources Department and the business office. And so myself and Mrs. Mulligan have been working very consistently with our teams to make sure payroll benefits have received training and we continue to make sure that the workflow is streamlined between our departments and in electronic fashion.
Thank you, Marissa. So I know that was a rather lengthy presentation, but we felt it was an important activity to do and update the board and the community regarding everything that we've been doing to support the board's vision and goals within our school district. And we'd like to just kind of open it up for any questions the board members may have or comments the board members may have. Anybody?
I have a comment. I agree. I think it was really great, like hearing it all. You know, I think through the year, we've kind of seen it like pieced out, you know, item by item and kind of seeing all the great work, you know, the admin is doing. It was really excellent. You know, I think all of the goals are very important goals. And I especially wanted to kind of mention like E L A and thinking about future-driven education and utilizing, you know, more technology and A I. Reading is going to be instrumental, one of the instrumental goals for leading into the future and also social emotional skill sets. I was wondering, and I don't know that I would, like, I liked all of the goals. What I was wondering was, you know, just the experience of working through the number of goals. If you think it was a great number, if less might be better, like, what I'm just wondering, the experience of the administration in working through it, trying to find like best practices and would there be any recommendations if we were to do it over? Yeah.
I think all of the goals are important, but they're also integrated with one another. And to support one another, so for example, the Human Resources Goal Regarding Recruitment supports effective instruction, supports an inclusive climate. The facilities planning and the budget supports the learner-focused mental health needs of the students. I think they're all aligned with one another. Maybe with a little more work, we could narrow them down a little bit. 11 goals is a lot of goals. So maybe with some language changes, we could still be working on these priorities, but it might be. The document itself is difficult to complete, but the goals themselves are very important. The things that we were able to do this year with the budget and capital project, I think are all important to put us in a good position for. But the doc, working with this document itself is difficult. And that's something that we're going to have to try to figure out a more fluid way to do it. So, but I appreciate your concern about maybe narrowing the number of goals. So, thank you. Somebody else?
I have some comments and questions. I'll just run through them quickly. For our board goal number six, we say increase the percentage. I think moving toward the board, we need to be more cognizant of, maybe be more prescriptive. Increase the percentage of what to what? So, you know, Roy mentioned that this will always be in progress, but maybe we can say if we have a measurable outcome, if we increase it to what percentage, then we could close it out or think about what we're learning, what we want to achieve there.
Mr. Styles and I have actually talked about that. We're working towards a model to do that.
Yeah, and I think like in future, yes, the board needs to work on, you know, being a little more prescriptive there and thinking what, you know, what, at what, you know, point are we going to say we've achieved this? And not leaving it open forever. I think that that is a smarter move there. When I, I know we skipped over pre-K, but you know, you knew I wasn't going to let that slide, right? I think when we, when we talk about this evaluating the pre-K program, I would really love to, again, see those kids that we do have in pre-K as they move throughout. I would love to be able to kind of, you know, follow them and see how the, how the program was successful, especially now that we're expanding into, you know, different types of, of settings. You know, we talked about making sure the quality. So, you know, I know that it was to evaluate to be able to expand it, but maybe since we did expand, I would love to be able to think about, you know, evaluating the students as they move throughout their career. And then the quality, I think, is going to be important moving forward. So that was a comment.
Mr. Styles has discussions that he's working on with Questar about a model to provide that oversight that you talked about for the, not just the Questar classes, but the community-based classes as well.
Right. I have one to add. And also, so up until this point, we didn't necessarily have an easy mechanism to track those students who attended pre-K. So we're going to be working, you know, with our technology department and Power School to have that where it's going to be easy, you know, easily to pull or we need to pull data of, okay, let's, can we pull out who attended our pre-K and compare them to students who did not attend our pre-K?
Right, right. Yeah. So I think like as a board, right, we have to get better, I think, about being able to anticipate, you know, having or wanting to do those types of things and setting ourselves up to be able to do it from the beginning, benchmarking, you know, that sort of thing. My other, the comment on number 10, Culture of Inclusion for All Students and Families, I think we did this year see a couple instances that was brought to the board. You know, maybe one-offs where we were in some sticky situations regarding, you know, if we are truly inclusive and that sort of thing. And I know, you know, that was, you know, we heard a lot of feedback from the community both ways. And I think, you know, I'd like to be more mindful of that moving forward. I don't necessarily know that I have any, you know, concrete suggestions, but just that, you know, I don't necessarily think we can capture that or we did capture that here, but conversations and those sorts of issues, we should probably figure out as a board how, how we're going to memorialize that and really think about how do we get better in handling those sorts of things. I think we had a lot of, you know, circle conversations regarding that. And perhaps, you know, being, being more on-page about it being a goal or something, I would love to be able to, you know, have better conversations and that. So not necessarily an answer or suggestion, but something that I've just noticed this year, that's not necessarily captured in that. Moving forward. Sorry, folks. The next comment I had was on the H R, you know, recruiting. I know that we're, we're looking to recruit beyond the capital region. I think it would be helpful if we brought to the board, you know, how many teachers did we recruit from outside of the area? And what, you know, any data we have there, if we, if we're collecting that, I would love to know more about that. Would be helpful. There was one other question. Oh, going back to Board Goal Number Three. When we talk about the facilities improvement and capital project, I'd be interested to know, and we don't necessarily need to talk about it right now, but in the future, when we get input from stakeholder groups through the community or district forums, I would love to know which ways were most successful. How are we engaging community and how and where do we see that people are most responsive and engaging with us? Don't necessarily know that I have the answer to that, but I would love to know at what points do we feel like the community is engaging the most? I know that you guys went out and talked and did a lot of presentations, but I don't really know which ones were fruitful. And I would love to do that. And at what point, I think we engage in the community, I think, up and going to the vote. But when do we engage them to start thinking about what they're interested in, in plans that haven't been developed yet? And I would love to know, maybe in the future, be able to do that in the, in the ways that are valuable or that you saw fruitful, to be able to get, you know, more of that feedback from the community before we've even developed, right, or thought about. And I know that really comes out of the BRAC and long-range planning, but maybe having a longer, longer-term outlook might be, might be useful. But really, I'd love to know how the community likes to be engaged with and maybe that's an insight into that through the capital projects.
Emily, is that just for capital projects and facilities or just in many various ways of initiatives in the district?
So I think, right, my mind is wondering how we engage with the community more and I know that folks like to, you know, have a lot of thoughts on capital projects and however we engage with the community, which way, which forms were most beneficial to the district, maybe we could capitalize on that and for future or expand on that in other ways we're looking to gain feedback. So kind of twofold thinking there.
Because it was a big initiative and we do it a lot of resources and effort to do that. So if it was effective, let's continue to utilize those other, other types of initiatives, not just projects.
Right, right. Thank you.
I had a couple. I don't know if anybody else did, but I think you kind of hit on a few of mine, Emily. I'm really interested in some of the presentations following up with great work on the parts of graduate, really, really looking forward to seeing some of the outcomes there with what you have to present. Middle School, gong gangbusters. I really love the fact that the middle school continues to get the attention it deserves, even through the capital project process. The senior exit survey and grad survey is always of interest to me to see where our students are, where they are, where have they think about their experiences at Columbia and the high school. So I want to continue to make sure we see the results of those data.
The senior exit survey was another thing that we learned about at the New York State School Boards Association in Lake Pleasant several years ago. And it was Mrs. Taylor who brought that forward to the district. So thank you, Mrs. Taylor.
Yep. Those are, those are great tools to measure how our, our graduates and are doing and what they thought about their educational experience.
What, I'm sorry, what goal was that under?
That is under five. As the measure of indicators. We've had some presentations in the past at that data.
To do a senior survey, it does address what access, did they feel that the services they were able to access for their guidance and postgraduate outcomes was, did they take advantage of it? Was it provided for them, those kinds of things? As well as the courses that they found helpful. Now we resurvey the class. Eighteen, I think it's 18 months after they leave us and then another five years after they leave us.
It's a great, great measurement tool.
That's really cool, man.
Yeah, the system about the U P K, you know, put a lot of resources in there. Just want to reiterate what Emily said. The system to track the student performance. Really interested in what you come up with and I don't know who's kind of seen this on goal number eight. The, the systems on the M T S S and the systems you're trying to, those are really challenging to get to. I know Roy that and probably Kat, you work on those kinds of things too. How do we look at student data, behavior data, especially to inform our instruction, how we, how we deal with different issues? It's a really challenging area and schools struggle with this all the time. So if you have the, the answer, I'm sure you'll be able to sell it and do it, but I, I know that's important. I'd like to see continued efforts there and whatever resources you need to have a help with that too. It's going to be important to do. S R O's ongoing conversations, I think that'll be more, so stay tuned. And just the ongoing work and the, and the demonstration by school was just terrific. It's a very involved community here. Any scream bush as we, as we know, and just, just captures all the wonderful things that are happening throughout the district. The parents that involve, the family involvement, community involvement is tremendous. And yeah, I think it's, it's just great to see all at one spot. And, you know, tying the data pieces, the measurable pieces, you know, as we get those reports over the years, tying it back to this. You know, we put this initiative in years ago, right, board members who are here. And this was like a really important part of what we wanted to do when Mr. Simons came on board and just to kind of give us, how are we doing? What's, how are things going? And are we lining up? And I think the basis that you saw in the introduction of Career Course are, are goals really, like Jesse said, we don't want to overwhelm the administration and the work that's get done here, but that was important. We need to make sure that, you know, you have the tools and resources you need as administration and district to, to get the things done and accomplish those goals, so.
So, so if I can just add in, I'm, I'm on the same wavelength with Jesse. I am a little concerned and we maybe this year's goals are these, you know, and maybe we tweak them a little bit, but I think we've done this over the years and then we go and we do another set of goals. So now administration has to worry about the old set of goals that they haven't met yet and now the new set of goals. We're, we're really setting that up to not be successful. So we really need to really focus on whatever we want, but not add another 10 goals on this year. And I think that that's a little bit different than we've talked about in the past. I think we need to really consider, because these are still important goals. To add another 10 on is just not going to be, you're not going to be productive at that, so.
I think as we roll out the portrait of a graduate and that should drive some of the curriculum development that's happening, some of curriculum projects. It should drive the assessments. It should drive the staffing. It should drive some other things that we need to align. I think the measurable indicators will come, will flush out more because we'll, we'll know where we want to go and we'll then we'll know at various levels how we're going to measure how far we need to still go, you know. So I think a lot of the refinement of this document in terms of, we'll come into measurable. What are we, what are we calling ourselves accountable for? The benchmarking is what I'm saying, the data I'm talking about. I think we need to really flesh that piece out a little bit as we're transitioning and moving forward.
And I guess as a
The general area stays the same.
As the, you know, as a board, like maybe we hold tight on setting new ones and as we successfully complete these, we can add them on incrementally. As, I mean, I'm just, I just think as a board, we need to reconsider it because all we're doing is just adding more on to something that's not going to be achievable. Now, there are a couple of things that I'd like to see. A I is a perfect example. And we talked about this a little bit with the Portrait of a Graduate is what's the teaching element of that? You know, we need to impact the fact that it's not going away, technology. So how are we going to help put it into education? So little things like that may, may want to sneak in, but you know, for myself, this, these are valuable goals. Many of them have been achieved, but they haven't all been achieved. And, you know, what, what do we want to focus on?
I think as you, as you move this ball forward, the number of goals that we have here, I think there's almost a course correction due to COVID. A lot of things, you know, were interrupted and you're trying to gain a lot of ground that we feel is always a lot. A lot of the things in that specifically address some of the situations that we face. I think as the course correction has been made, and, and I'm glad you brought it up because it was in my notes, it's, a lot of things are lesser included. And I think when you, you set a tone for the district and you're setting your goals as you move forward, keep them pretty basic. And then you have subcategories and then you have initiatives as a result of a goal, rather than just to tick the boxes saying we've done this, this and this. I think that's really important in, in, in future planning because you can get bogged down into the weeds of way too much. Just throwing it out there, the school safety thing. It's, it's been, it's occupying a lot of space in a board goal.
It's, it's been, it's, it's occupying a lot of space in a board goal when it really is an initiative. That we have this whole thing of safety as part of an environmental thing here. So just. On those points and as you move the ball forward, the other thing I would be interested. As we, we talk about employment, the impacts of different schools closing, expanding our area. I would be interested in if you have an opportunity to track people who don't take the job when offered. And what may be the reason is because I think ultimately what we're, what we're saying is you have to train to your weakness. Doesn't, weakness is not defined as a negative, it's just an outcome. What are we doing? What can we do better? And how can we learn and train from that learning period? So I think that's just some of the things that jumped out at me when you talked about it.
Yeah, and I think like the goal of like, what is the strategic plan? I don't, you know. You want them to be measurable and achievable, and then some of them should be folding into your normal book of business. Like the recruiting, you know, if we set up that that's the important thing, and then that's how we are going to recruit now, then it can be closed out. But that doesn't mean the work is going to be less or move on. And then, you know, then, then that, that's part of, right, the administration is deciding what are we taking on now? And what are we not doing because it's, we either achieved it or, you know, it's in direct conflict with a, with a goal. And I think that that's important conversation and we have to, as a board, empower the administration to make those choices and to, you know, we have to have. You know, the abilities and, and, and we believe in faith in them that, that they, they make those decisions. You know, and I, you know, think some of the goals should be more prescriptive, Michelle, to your point. So that we can close them out and we can say we've achieved this, right? We shouldn't. If we're not, and if we haven't achieved it, why or why not? And, you know, are we going to move on or are we going to revamp it? So I definitely agree. I think a strategic plan is, should really though is more than a year, right? You can achieve everything that you need to in a year and we should be, you know, mindful of that, but also we need to be more prescriptive in our goals, I think. A little, a little more narrow focused and. Have a larger plan, right? But then how are we going to achieve it? And that should be what we talk about in this sort of things. And then, then we can measure it and say, you know, we've achieved it or not. So, yeah, I think.
I, I, I was thinking the exact same thing, just, just last, last. But just because when I, when, as we was going through it, I was thinking to myself like, you know, with the number of goals and all the information was great, right? The progress, like it was great. And I was thinking a hundred percent, like I, I wasn't wanting to have more data and highlights, you know? But I, and I was wondering like, how do we get away? And that's where the narrowing of the goals and I think she was talking about, you know, that kind of came in is.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Feedback, we appreciate it. I want to thank my administrative team for. All of the data, which includes the principals and administrators that are in the audience and all the faculty and staff that work on these things every day.
Yeah.
All right, because of the length of the board goal progress, we did not include any specific discussion items for the, for the agenda. All right, because we just had our discussion there. Moving on to the regular business, we have several items here. The vote on approval programs for resident children with disabilities, any questions or comments on that one? Seeing none, even motion to approve that. Jesse, Michelle, second, all those in favor? Approved. The district voting results.
I guess congratulations to the community. We are asking the board to approve the results of the budget vote, capital project and board election. As well as we have provided some historical data regarding the voting results on various budgets. Plus purchase reserves in the past, capital projects in the past, and the trend is up in terms of voter. Participation and we've had a pretty good period of time where we've had a number of budget proposals passed by a super majority, so.
So I was commenting to Mr. Simons, I think, you started when, Mr. Simons? Bring up that, that report there, Peter, wait.
Okay.
Statistics.
It's a team effort, but I started, my first budget here was spring of 2017. I started July 1st, 2016. First budget would have been proposed in May of 2017. We've done pretty well. Again, it's a community effort.
It is, and but I just, I do want to recognize the fact that if you look at some of those percentages, the turnout. You're in the high 60s, 70s and mumping up to the 80s and it's really very impressive. Very impressive for the team and the district. The support for the community has been tremendous. I think it just shows this board that we're on the right track. Have been on the right track and we did the right things in the past to build on the future. All right, so you see some of those numbers, just terrific.
Jennifer had a highlight.
Yeah, so this was my first district vote and I just, I have to say, I am so impressed with Kelly Krebs and how she led voting day. She, she did an amazing job. All the voting workers, I mean, they were just very professional. They, they knew exactly what they were doing. But most importantly, I just have to thank Jeannie Payneberg.
Yeah, Jeannie.
Our board clerk because she made everything happen, you know, she really brought everything together and we had great success. We didn't have any snappus or anything, the technology worked. Thank you to Mr. Goodwin for that and his team. So I just wanted to express that, you know, I, much appreciation for Jeannie and, you know, all of our, our. Vote workers, so.
Yes, definitely. Just need more privacy boost.
It was, there was, I was there for several hours at golf, you know, in the evening and just observing and the flow was constant. The turnout was really great, so.
So with that, I need a motion to approve the voting results. This may also turn Joanne, second, Jennifer, goes in favor. Approved. Congratulations to the community. Appropriation of insurance recovery funds.
This is reimbursement through insurance for the flood that happened in September. I remember it was a Friday night. And we did receive reimbursement for all of the expenses.
Yes.
Because of the effort.
All right, need a motion to approve that. Michelle, second, Emily, all those in favor? Approved. Students awards and scholarships, this is in the year we have our pouring rights and monies that come in for the awards and scholarship. Need to acknowledge that receipt. Questions or comments? Need a motion to approve? Jesse, second, Joanne, all those in favor? And we have our friends that are going to France, Spain and Japan. Awesome. So the first one is the France and Spain field trip. Need a motion to approve that. John, second, Michelle, all those in favor? Emily, you in? Yes, we're.
Sorry.
It's okay. Approved. And then Japan. Questions or comments on that? Any more seats?
Did we get, um, did we get the answer on, I know that additional credits would have been allowed. Did we get the answer on if that's additional fee? For that or?
I don't recall the question.
Yeah. You mean they could earn a college credit or something?
I thought I saw that in the original proposal.
Or do you know the answer?
Yeah, there's no additional fee for the, for the college credit, but it only through the, you see the southern portion. So it's only open to that one school.
So the credits apply just to that school?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So if you're going or attending, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, good memory. All right, we put that. Michelle, no, John, second, all those in favor? Approved. Enjoy the great trip and I'm sure we will look forward to a report back on how these went. I think it's one of the first, like I said, the first one to go to Japan, right? So enjoy and we'll hear back. What's that?
Don't know where he got that.
Oh, okay. Very good, very good. All right, we move on to committee reports. We'll start with Marissa.
Not at this time.
Nothing. Jennifer? Roy said you'd have a couple.
Sure, I already spoke about the Portrait of a Graduate, so I wasn't going to go over that again unless anyone has questions or comments regarding. Portrait of a Graduate information I gave already. So I'll move on just quickly. On May 8th, we had a committee for curriculum studies meeting. We had program review updates by our AIS team, our art department, mathematics for Mr. Donato, our D Donato and social studies. We did have, I didn't mention it when the middle school was here, but this new course proposal did go through CCS and it was endorsed by CCS before it was brought to. Brought to the board. Then I did just want to highlight the program review schedule that will be coming out for the next five years. Did make a couple of little adjustments. I recommended that we add. Our English language learner, our ELL department to have a program review and then also our school counseling department to have a program review. They are not typically on there. We do have a new ENL or ELL department chair. So I thought it was appropriate to add that and the same thing with school counseling. And then one little change that we made is there's, looking at those five years, there's some years that are very heavy. In terms of like this year, for example, we have mathematics, which is a large core department, and we have social studies, another large core department. So kind of took a look at that and took those four cores, made sure that they were on separate years. So there may be, for this next cycle, there may be a. For example, I think maybe social studies or I think it's English is going to end up going six years to get them off of, you know, the cycle. So that those cores are spread out a little bit more.
Yeah. Quick overview, thank you.
Sorry, I just want to say I appreciate the idea of adding counseling. I think that's very important.
So just a question, and I always have this question. What does it mean by the curriculum, community curriculum studies endorses a course? What are you, what are you, what are you telling us there?
I'm telling you that they, the, any, any new course, for example. They come to me, we discuss it, you know, what are going to be the implications? It then goes to our CCS committee. And what they're doing is, you know, they get presentation, report, maybe some data, and from that. They're kind of saying, yes, we think that this would be a good idea for our, our programming. So a lot of times, to be honest with you, it's more new courses are more at the high school level to add to our program of studies.
Right.
You know, this one, there was a discussion very similar to the discussion that was had here with the board around, you know, changing that. You know, that, you know, kind of changing computer literacy to that new course and what it would mean, you know, for our students.
Yeah, so the board approves the course, but they're endorsing the information that's provided because the board has to approve every course.
You have a board policy that requires you to approve all courses and curriculum.
I just, some, some of the data that you're presenting to this group, I'd like to see as part of some of that presentation, if, if the board wants to do that. Because I think the questions came up and they could have been answered by some of the data that was presented to the CCS committee, it sounds like. Okay. So I think some of that, some of that information doesn't have to be long about the data and how you came, like Jesse's question, how did you choose this? Part of it, you know, not a criticism, just a question about how we can support the coursework and have the information we need to make informed decisions around those courses.
Actually, though, I, I would like to know if it was endorsed beforehand too, because that's, that's important. If you guys buy into it, I think it's very important for us to consider that.
Well, does it even come to us if it's not endorsed?
Correct. It, it really wouldn't come to move forward if it wasn't endorsed. So there is some.
Perhaps the question would be, Michelle is like, what?
Don't we see?
Yes.
What is the number?
So I think it's a formal process. It is a contractually required committee.
Yep.
That provides the assurances that teachers will be developed, be involved in developing of curriculum and courses. What Mike is asking for is some of the data, the basis of the course that's provided to be more visible to the board. So the board has that as part of the process of approving the course. No course by policy can be approved for implementation in the school district without the recommendation of superintendent approval of the board.
Correct.
This is the process that we go through. You bring it to me where the teachers have felt, yeah, this is good, this is something that we can endorse and then I.
Yep.
And CCS, we are careful with the language that CCS is not approving the course, they're endorsing it to move forward in the process.
Mike, I've sat on CCS for many years and I'd like to recommend that when it comes to the board, that the. Chair people come with you and talk to you, answer any questions that might have. Give a little bit of a presentation right from their level.
Yeah, have that conversation. Good. Yeah, we can have to talk more about that. Just very interested in the course development process, so. I don't sit in that committee, so I don't see a lot of the background. All right, and then Jeff.
Yes, just briefly, because the board is going to have a presentation at the June board meeting regarding one of these initiatives. I've talked a couple of times about the program that we set up in Questar Bosis, empowering and elevating student voices. We invited to our global education committee the students that were involved as leaders in that project, including those that participated in the summit. At Questar Bosis, that was a very successful program. Our students did a project. To survey other students in the high school around school climate, student relations as an aspect of school climate. Their advisor, Marta Meltzer-McMorris, as well as Nicole Conti. Are planning to bring the students here, the board meeting, to share this, this is an important initiative and to discuss the climate survey. And what they plan to do with that information next year. We also had a conversation about what can we do next year to kind of work on further. Celebration of the diversity within our school district. And one of our ENL teachers suggested doing a program called Spotlight on Families. Where we highlight families and students have come to our district from other areas, including other countries. To help the community understand that we value the cultures, the traditions, the celebrations and the holidays. And experiences of our families and to bring that to light through our public information program. And spotlighting maybe once a month or every other month, a family that is here in East Greenbush. Maybe didn't grow up in East Greenbush, but came from another country and some of their culture experiences and. And just as an educational way to A, celebrate, but B, inform. And everybody liked the idea, endorsed the idea within the committee and. We're holding off on it this year because as you know, Mark Adams overloaded with a lot of different projects, but. This process will involve the committee doing a lot of the work and then providing it to the, to the public information office to publicize it. So you might feature a family that is attending Janae, that has their children in the ENL program there or at Red Mill or the middle school or the high school. And there's a lot of that work that has been done in the building to bring those families in, to share their cultures. But maybe bringing it to a little higher level of visibility through this focus on the families, spotlight on the families. I thought it was a good idea.
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, moving on from committee reports, we have table motions, we have not at this time, all business, board members, I don't have anything. Move to consent agenda. These are items that the board has seen and reviewed. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda items and through Jay? Seeing none, motion by consent to approve. Jesse, in the second. John, all those in favor? Approved. All right. No addendums, new business, board members, anything? Good. Public forum, anybody like to address the board? Who's remaining? And board forum number two, we'll start on my right with Emily.
I'm all set, thank you.
Great, thank you. Joanne. Jesse.
I'm set.
John. Michelle and Cheryl. There is a, I got this board committee list here. Anything you want to comment about that? These are the board committees that currently exist, when you need, when you need a spec by June, need a. Okay, well, so the board meeting is planned in July, so. If you want to stay, get the information, keep, remove or additional, I'll take a look and.
I, I think that it would be helpful if you maybe had like. And I'm sure like the new board members will, you know, will have to tee it up for them to join, but. What, if there's a listing of what these committees are, when they meet, who, you know, who's on them, the purpose. Also, they'll like liaisons that as well, like what that entails.
We had a booklet.
We do have a booklet.
Yeah, we sent it out.
With the committees and the descriptions of the committees, we just have, the dates was being set.
Yeah, the schedules are, it's an informational packet, so.
So Emily, I think I'm going to make a recommendation. I, I would like to pass the nispa baton to you. Because I think that would be right in your wheel.
Thank you for identifying that, I appreciate that.
I know you'll enjoy it.
I'll have to take that under consideration.
The special advisor is the advisor. You can make some good contacts there. I really enjoyed that, that committee. That's a good one.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. I don't have anything at this time. Keep going, anybody? Last chance. All right. We do have meeting for example session, for personal. We do have meeting for executive session for personnel and contract matters. We don't anticipate any coming back.
We may, we may, we may be coming back.
May come back to regular business after this, so just so the public knows. So with that, we need a motion to, to executive session. John, second, Joanne, all those in favor? All right, thanks. Have a great night. Good seeing you.